Good evening. The November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will now come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Ms. Bourdain.
Here.
Mr. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Perez.
Here.
Mr. Treebosser.
Here.
Mr. Valles.
Here.
And Mr. Mulnar.
Here. Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: On January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number Eleven, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Wolferman. Mr. Harris, please read the closed session statement.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. In compliance with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects—I was going to say topics—subjects accepted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client privilege—excuse me—attorney-client advice. Any information regarding the closed session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Treebosser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Board will now retire to closed session and will be back when we are finished. Please rise, sir, for the salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
No motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Treebosser. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bourdain. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Just to let the record show that Dr. Massimino is not here today. He's down in Washington, DC, for Ms. Schaefer from the Claremont Avenue School Twenty, accepting the Blue Ribbon School, the honor that was bestowed upon us. Will somebody make a motion to approve the minutes of previous meetings?
No motion.
Motion by Ms. Bourdain. Is there a second? By Mr. Treebosser. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Mr. Secretary, state for the record any notice of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year, we opened the following bids: On November first, two thousand and twenty-three, IFB twenty-four dash eleven, Student Transportation Services for General Education; On November first, two thousand and twenty-three, IFB twenty-four dash twelve, Student Transportation Services Special Education; and also on November first, two thousand and twenty-three, IFB twenty-four dash thirteen, Student Transportation Services for Homeless.
Thank you. Mr. Wolferman, will you please introduce our student representative from Colonia High School, Tito Bila Loa Popula?
Thank you. Officially known as Toby, Toby is currently a senior at Colonia High School and is the youngest of three siblings. He is a highly motivated and hard-working student who balances his demanding classes with several extracurricular clubs. Outside of the classroom, Toby has played on the football team for all four years as both a cornerback and a wide receiver. Toby has been starting on defense for the varsity team for the past two seasons, making twenty consecutive starts. He leads the team in passes defended and is called on a weekly basis to cover the opponent's best receiver. Toby has also been the team's emotional leader. Toby has always been one of the hardest workers on and off the field, and his work ethic is exemplified by never missing an offseason workout. He volunteers his time to teach youth players the game and what it means to be a Colonia football player. Toby has earned the respect of his teammates and coaches because of his dedication to this program. Toby also ran for the track and field team the past three years. In both two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three spring track seasons, he was recognized as a member of the GMC All-Blue Division. Toby is also active representing Colonia High School off the field. He is a member of the Society for Prevention of Teen Suicide and helps spread awareness by handing out hearts with the hotline number. Toby is also a Patriot Ambassador, where his confidence and leadership skills are always on display. Toby welcomed the newly-minted Patriot ambassadors by greeting every student by name, smiling, and explaining the procedure for the training as they entered Colonia High School. Students who were nervous about giving tours were immediately put at ease by Toby's empathy and kindness. Toby took this initiative to welcome his fellow classmates despite only being asked to hand out clipboards. His acts of kindness can also be seen in his involvement in community service with his church. Reflecting upon his years at Colonia High School, Toby values the fact that anyone can become your friend, and he is appreciative of the support he received from his teachers and coaches. Toby is currently applying to colleges and intends to major in forensic science while he continues to pursue playing football.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfman. Members of Colt, President Mulnar, and the members of the Board of Education for inviting me this evening. I'm reading the active activity list of the schools. School four and five, the two thousand and twenty-three Sawa Dewali Food Drive, Breast Cancer Awareness Day and Bracelet Sale, Bus Safety Week, Bus Evacuation Drills, Trunk Retreat, Halloween Parade, Grade Three Public Library Visit, Grand Faloons Assembly, American Education Week, Virtual Parent Visits and Teacher Letters, Veterans' Day Flag Raising and Program Songs, Native American Heritage Month Art Project, Native American Heritage Month Google Presentations with Class Activities. School twenty, Claremont Avenue School Twenty has been recognized as the two thousand and twenty-three National Blue Ribbon School from the U.S. Department of Education in the category of exemplary high-performing schools. This is a prestigious honor as Claremont Avenue is one of only three hundred fifty-three schools in the U.S., one of nine in NJ, and the only school in Middlesex County. PTO Parade and Trunk Retreat, Harvest Fest, Students Engage in Steam Activities Related to the Season, American Education Week Activities, two thousand and twenty-three Sawa Dewali Food Drive, Veterans' Day Activities, Fire Prevention Program with Colonia Fire Department, Officer Harris Educated Students on an Informed and Violence Awareness Assembly, Students Engage in DEI Activities During the Week of Respect and Inclusion, and Continue to Collect Can Tabs for Ronald McDonald House Charities. School twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-three Sawa Dewali Food Drive, S-October, Warm Feet, Warm Hearts, Some Sock Donation to the Local Shelter, Pink Out Day, Coins for a Cure, six hundred forty dollars donation made to the Colonia Cancer Walk, Safety Olympics Week, Violence Awareness Assembly with Detective Zeno, Grand Faloons Assembly, Veterans' Day Activities, PTO Events like the Book Fair, Candy Bar, Bingo, and Trunk Retreat. School twenty-two, First Spirit Day of the School Year is held on September twenty-second. Students had a flag raising in a walkathon in honor of childhood cancer awareness, Week of Inclusion and Respect in Activities, Fire Prevention Week, Assembly Led by the Fire Marshal, and students got to see a real fire truck. School Violence Awareness Week Activities, reinstated the Tiger Buddies Program, where our older and younger classrooms are paired together for student-led lessons. On October twenty-seventh, the trunk retreat; on October thirty-first, the Halloween Parade; and on November fifteenth, hosted by veteran Al Jakowski from the VFW Post four-four-one-zero, the Grand Faloons Assembly. From school twenty-three, the two thousand and twenty-three Sawa Dewali Food Drive, Veterans' Day Pledge and Visits from Local Veterans, Literacy Fair, Thanksgiving Feast, Grade Three Crash Trip to Town Hall, Dewali Celebrations, American Education Week Activities, Halloween Parade Parties, Class Visit from Spookly the Square Pumpkin. School twenty-four, the two thousand and twenty-three Sawa Food Drive, Breast Cancer Awareness Day, Bus Evacuation Drills, Trunk Retreat, Halloween Parade, American Education Week. School twenty-seven, two thousand and twenty-three Sawa Dewali Food Drive, Breast Cancer Awareness Day, Trunk Retreat, Halloween Parade, Grand Faloons Assemblies, American Education Week, Veterans' Day Flag Raising and Program Songs, Native American Heritage Month, Violence Awareness Assembly with Officer Harris. From Avonale Middle School, they had the two thousand and twenty-three Sawa Dewali Food Drive, Food Drive to Support St. James' Food Pantry, Presentation by Detective Zeno for School Violence Awareness Week, Hosted a Halloween Masquerade Dance, American Education Week Activities in All Classes, Veterans' Day Celebration Held on November fifteenth with Two Veterans, Kevin Smith and David Sanchez, Illusion Maker Assembly for Sixth and Seventh Graders. Colonia Middle School had American Education Week Activities, Native American History Month Activities, Hispanic Heritage Month Celebrated, the Woodbridge Township Police Department Assembly on Anti-Bullying and School Violence Awareness. The Colonia Cup is now opening Serving Takeout Coffee, Providing our Special Education Students with Life Skills in a Running Small Business. The baseball and softball teams have made it to the district finals. The Community Service Club had a Clothing and Food Drive to Benefit Local Families in Need. The Student Council coordinated with school-wide spirit activities to support breast cancer awareness and honor our United States veterans. The PTO coordinated a Sixth Grade Halloween Dance. The Gardening Club worked with Greenable, where Bridger and Rutgers University, to install a rain garden in our sustainable courtyard. Colonia High School had members of the CHS English Department, established a local chapter of Sigma Delta, the National English Honor Society, and inducted their first class of twenty-six students. The Spanish Honor Society hosted a Hispanic Heritage Month Celebration, a new Hispanic Culture Club was formed. The Mini-Thon hosted a trunk retreat on October twenty-eighth, raising nine hundred twenty dollars to help the fight against pediatric cancer in partnership with Four Diamonds. The Colonia Football Team had its annual Eric Legrand Night on October thirteenth, selling belief shirts with all the purses going to the Eric's Charity. Colonia Girls Soccer Team raised five thousand four hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents to the Go for the Gold Foundation as a part of the GMC Soccer for a Cause Charity Festival. Interact Club Students Participate in the Inman Avenue Breast Cancer Walk. Interact Club Students Hosted a Hand-in-Hand Event. The Student Council and Interact Club hosted a Halloween Movie Night, raising approximately eight hundred dollars. The Student Council raised six hundred sixty dollars for breast cancer research, donated blankets, towels, and linens to the Woodbridge Animal Shelter, donated non-perishable food items to St. James' Food Pantry, and collected new and gently-used clothing items to the CHS PTO Clothing Drive. The National Honor Society donated over thirty used eyeglasses to the Lions Club. The National Honor Society donated over fifty socks for seniors. The Girls Volleyball Team participated in a Spike-Out Cancer Tri-Match, raising money for breast cancer awareness. The Cheer and the Dance Team hosted their first Little Patriots Clip, allowing young community members to cheer the dance at a varsity football game. The National Honor Society participated in a Women's Aware's Moving Beyond Abuse Five-K Race and Charity Walk. The Senior and Junior Class hosted a Home and Coming Dance on October twelfth. The Colonia High School Choir sang for the Woodbridge Township Domestic Violence Response Team's Silence Witness Candlelight Vigil on October seventeenth. The Colonia High School Choirs performed for the Woodbridge Township Retired Educators at the Woodbridge Main Library on November first. Colonia's High School Production of Puffs will be held on November seventeenth at seven p.m., and November eighteenth, two p.m., and seven p.m. All are invited to attend. Event sale tickets will be sold between November third and November fifteenth only. After this date, tickets will be sold at the door. Thank you for this opportunity for me to be part of the Board's education meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby, for your detailed report. You're more than welcome to stay with us for the rest of the evening. If you have other things you have to do, we certainly understand.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
We also like to thank Colony High School Principal, Mr. Chiara, for taking time out of his schedule to be here tonight. Mr. Wolferman, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of October two thousand and twenty-three.
Thank you. The following reports of the superintendent were received: Registered Statistics for October, Report of Fire Drills for October, Student Suspension Reports in Elementary and Secondary Bomb Threat Reports, and the monthly reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeking to protect the First Amendment rights of those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agendas being presented this evening. When you come up to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside, along with the specific agenda item number you wish to discuss. As per Regulation eleven hundred D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you've completed your opportunity to speak. This is public comment on the agenda items. Seeing none? Superintendent's Agenda?
On behalf of the Superintendent of Schools, I present the following eighteen recommendations.
I have a motion.
No motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Any abstentions, Ms. Bourdain?
Oh. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I abstain on item number ten under the name of Susan Bourdain. Thank you.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Mr. President, I abstain from item number ten in the name of Jenny Perez. Yes, to all other items.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
I abstain also on item ten in the name of Jonathan Treebosser. Yes, on all other items.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Policy and Planning Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments from the Board?
Mr. Mulnar.
Mr. Harris.
I just want to recognize item number one on our agenda this evening. Just yesterday, Woodbridge Township School District recognized Veterans' Day via having thirty-nine Woodbridge Township Veterans. Many of them involved the American Legions, VFWs, including many of them being Woodbridge Police Officers, came to our schools, read to students, talked about their experiences. I know the students enjoy that. Just want to recognize them for participating, as well as the Veterans Council, Veterans Alliance, excuse me, for assisting in that endeavor. I'm sure that ran through Mr. Poserino's office as well. So thank you for continuing that tradition for us. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments from the Board?
Mr. President.
Mr. Sedana?
I'd just like to recognize and thank the administration for the Computer Science Education Week coming up in December. Being a tech guy myself, I'm very happy about this. I know this was in discussion for a while. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Policy and planning? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Curriculum Agenda, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following night items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Mr. Treebosser. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Any comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Finance and Insurance, Mr. Treebosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following ten items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Mr. Treebosser. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sedana. Are there any comments from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Security and School Safety, Mr. Valles.
Thank you, Mr. President. My recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, I present the following two items. I move for the adoption of foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Valles. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Anderson. Are there any comments from the Board? Seeing none? Roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Transportation, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you. Technology. I have trans next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Technology. There's two transes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Technology Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments from the Board? Roll call?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Athletics and Extracurricular, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Transportation Agenda, Mr. Sedana.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary's Office presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Equity Commission Agenda, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
Yes.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
Yes. Personnel Agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following forty-three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Bourdain.
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Mr. Sedana.
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser.
I will be abstaining on item twenty-seven in the name of Linda Treebosser. Yes, on all other items.
Mr. Valles.
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar.
On item number thirteen, I'll be abstaining on the name Charlie Mulnar. Yes, on all other items. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations this evening?
I don't have this time, Mr. President.
Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the Board?
Mr. President.
Ms. Bourdain.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Harris?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following forty-three items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Harris. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary's office presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary's office presents the following seven items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Sedana. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez.
Yes.
Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Equity and extracurricular, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Athletics and extracurricular, Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Athletics and Extracurricular Committee on the Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources presents the following four items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Ms. Anderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Sedana?
Yes.
Mr. Treebosser?
Yes.
Mr. Valles?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Sports and technology, Ms. Anderson?
Good evening, Tom Maris, Ford, New Jersey. Just a couple of comments real quick. One with the mics. It appears that everybody's mic's a little different. Some of them sound very gravelly, others are much clearer. When you're sitting back here, I don't know how it comes across on the recordings themselves, but they aren't equal. As you said, some of them you couldn't even hear. But anyway, I certainly want to thank and congratulate the incumbents who were re-elected to the office, to Mr. Mohammed on his taking over for Mr. Mulnar. And I can tell him he's got big shoes to fill, and I mean that sincerely. He's done an outstanding job, and he's going to have a tough time even coming close to what you've accomplished in the time that you've served on that board, Mr. Mulnar.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I mean that, as I said, very sincerely. A little tongue-in-cheek, talking about equity. I was thinking about it, and I was talking to a friend of mine that was a township official the other day, and he was telling me something about his tires, and apparently one was low, but he did not have the equipment to bring that up. And I said, "Well, if you wanted equality, if all the tires were equal," but they're not. So, you want to reach, achieve equity, but you don't have the equipment to bring that one deficient tire up. Lower the pressure on the other three tires. You'll have equity. And that's kind of where a lot of people think we're going with this equity business, is that we keep lowering our standards. And in that connection, there's a reason why I'm making that point, is that apparently the NJEA is trying to get legislation passed now that would eliminate proficiency testing for new teachers. I'd like to know where the school board stands on that. Would this district support that, or would they take a challenge to the state and ask our representatives to not allow that bill to be passed? I don't see where it benefits. I can see where it could benefit the union. They get more people in, they get more dues. But how does that help the child or children that has to be educated if the teachers are coming in, as I just said, with less skill sets or at least not passing even a proficiency test? And if such individuals were to be hired by the district, would they be hired at a lower salary than other starting teachers who may have come with more credentials than those individuals? Hopefully, the district will fight against it and continue to mandate that any teacher we're hiring does certainly get past a proficiency test. With regards to school security, I've mentioned many times that I'm very much in favor of cameras going back into the classroom. We can talk about that, probably add if an item, but let me just go on to the addition of the police. To whom do the police report that we're hiring? Are they employees of the school district? And are their salaries? Are they salaried or are they hourly? Do they get any benefits, including vacations? Are they trained how to handle disagreements between students, staff, and/or teachers? If so, what specific training are they given? Those are a couple of questions I'd like you to answer, because some people have come to me and asked what's going on with the police. And I'm a very big supporter of our police department, as you all know, and I think they'll do an outstanding job. But again, I don't know what training these officers may have had since their retirement. I know there's a lot going on with the department now with the active police in community affairs, if you will, just a broad rush on that. But if you could explain what training they have or will have to deal with a lot of the issues, and look, maybe Woodbridge, not maybe, Woodbridge is a great town, but we see what's going on throughout the country. And to say that it couldn't happen here would be a fool's paradise. It certainly can. I'm sure we have more than sufficient problems within the school district that don't always get out to the public, but it's important that we have the staff there, particularly our police, to intervene where necessary in a way that settles disagreements without having, hopefully, without having to take it to the courts. Those are my questions. By the way, just very quickly, to Mr. Bush, congratulations on your landslide win in Mattoch and Borough. I know you didn't have any confidence in him, but seriously, congratulations. You're doing a great job for the borough. I'm sorry, go ahead now.
Thank you, Mr. Maris. Mr. Wolferman, the question on the police, the officers on our school?
Yes. Mr. Maris, what I can tell you is that they are salaried employees, ten-month employees, and they do, they are employed, they do work for the school district. As far as their training, I would have to defer to somebody else.
Yeah, I mean, they report to Mr. Small as our security official. You know, I'm sure we will be having continuing education for them, just like we do for our teachers. We always have classes and stuff for them to take, to, you know, to learn on their craft. So, I'm sure they're going to be getting that. They, officers that we do have employed come from various sections of law enforcement. So, we have that, which is good. We have people that were for the US government, people that were in local police forces around, which is good. They're a familiar face now, seems to be very popular so far in the buildings. Our teachers have had nothing but great things to say, and parents, too. I guess it's good to have that one familiar face, you know, every morning when they go in there.